We will now call the meeting to order. If we could pay attention to Councilmember Lesser for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Today is National Police Memorial Day in honor of the officers of the capital city who have given the ultimate sacrifice. I ask for our invocation today that we recognize a moment of silence in their honor. Thank you.
If we may rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are celebrating Letter Carrier's Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day. It says, "Whereas Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example on how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those who they serve. Food bank shelves filled from drives during the holidays are often bare by late spring. Last year nationally, the letter carriers raised over 80 million pounds of food, of which over 64,000 pounds of food was raised for the city of Topeka in 2017. Whereas the need for food assistance remains an important issue in our city, state, and nation. It is our duty as citizens to bring awareness to the ongoing problem of hunger and to contribute to this important cause by making sure that we put non-perishable food items in our mailbox on the day of the food drive. Your letter carrier will pick up these items while the delivery of the mail, and altogether we can help to feed our hungry. Therefore, I, Michelle de la Isla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, proclaim the day of Tuesday, May 12, as Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day." Would you like to say a few words?
We can give a preliminary update. We collected on Saturday over 47,000 pounds of food and $165 so far, but we're not done yet.
Thank you for the worthy cause. We so appreciate the support that you all are doing to ensure that we have children and families who are desperately in need of food and services well fed. Thank you.
Thank you.
If our friends from Arts Connect would join us. So this is a very fun one as well. We are celebrating the vision and the work that our community has put together to establish a mural in the Brown v. Board site. I will take a little bit of Sarah's thunder and say, if you haven't signed up to volunteer, it's an amazing experience and it's a beautiful thing. So we have a proclamation that reads, "Whereas Brown v. Board of Education was a landmark case that profoundly changed American education system and its lasting legacy, not just for Topeka, but for the nation. Whereas the mural focuses on themes of diversity, equality, justice, and inclusion, and it was designed by gathering input, stories, images, and other inspirations from all corners of the community. And whereas the mural is a community-wide collaboration of public and private entities, and the painting of the mural will be completed by students, neighbors, artists, and community members. Whereas Topeka, Kansas affirms the principles of equality, inclusion, and justice for all." Now, I, Michelle de la Isla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 12, 2018, as the Brown v. Board Community Mural Day.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the council, and thank you for all of you in Topeka who came out last weekend to help paint this wall. It's 130 feet wide by 30 feet tall, so it's a considerable undertaking. Cruise by, see what we're up to. It'll be really impressive once it's together. And again, all of this is an effort to create strong community partnerships through the arts and create a more just and awesome Topeka. So, thank you all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. If I could be joined by the city manager, Molly. Is Rita here today? I will read the proclamation and then have city manager try to talk a little bit about this. We're pretty excited about this. "Whereas strengthening police and community partnerships, SPCP, is focused on improving public safety by improving trust and developing partnerships between law enforcement and the diverse communities they serve. Whereas to assist communities where historical barriers impact trust between law enforcement and increase local capacity, develop partnerships for local solutions and local issues. Support an ongoing community outreach and existing partnerships within the city that strengthen and encourage community commitment. And whereas collaboration between local law enforcement and the community is critical for long-term success in problem-solving strategies and improving the quality of life for all of our residents." Now therefore, I, Michelle de la Isla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim June 8, 2018, as Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships Day.
Thank you, Mayor. We're obviously very excited about this project. We'll be the second in the nation to experience the ability to improve our community relationships and partnerships between the police department and the members of the community. We're excited about this opportunity for people to express their concerns or issues that they may have had in the past and how we continue to move that forward. And then, as you mentioned, have an enduring committee that will continue to move those issues forward after we have the one-day event to find out what those issues that we need to work on are.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the commitment to continuing the communications that we've already started in our community. City Manager?
Mayor, thank you. At this time, I ask Audrey to come forward. Audrey Otterman from Eisenhauser to give us the presentation on the audit. You represented the audit information earlier, so she'll go through various items related to it. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to go through and look at or talk about the different components of the financial statements, and you just stop me if you have questions, and we'll just go right through it. So, I want to first highlight some of the parts of the financial statements that I think are the most interesting or give really the most detailed information to the people that are reading them. I think management's discussion analysis, starting on page four and through 16, is really great. It's management's opportunity to provide comparative data on an entity-wide level. It's really the only place in the financial statements that that is done, and it gives them a chance to talk about the different events that occurred in the city throughout the year. Whether bonds were issued, new capital projects were started, new grants were received, this is really the place where they can discuss that in their own terms, and it's very easy to read. So, I'd like to highlight those pages. On to page 17 and 18 is the government-wide financial statements. This is the only place in the financial statements where the whole city is shown on two pages. It's the closest thing to a balance sheet and income statement that you're going to see. If you look at it and compare it to last year's financial statements, there weren't any new accounting pronouncements that drastically changed the financial statements like they have in most recent years. There weren't a lot of changes this year in accounting pronouncements. The one change that is on the face of those particular financial statements is a component unit was added, and that's Friends of the Topeka Zoo. So, that is, if you see the component unit column, that's the organization that is represented in that column. And if we go to kind of go forward into the note disclosures, page 31 talks about that relationship between the city and Friends of the Topeka Zoo, and why they were included in the financial statements this year, and why they will be included going forward. More into the note disclosures, some big notes that I like to talk about is on page 43. It's the capital asset note. This particular city does a really good job of providing a lot of detailed information on their capital assets, not a lot of summary, a lot of detail, so you can see the assets of the city in pretty good detail. Onto page 47 is the long-term debt note. That's always the biggest note disclosure in any city generally. It shows all the different kinds of debt that the city has issued, the payment over the life of the different types of debt instruments, and then if there were any refundings, there would be discussions about that in that note disclosure as well. I want to highlight page 54. It isn't anything new. It's other post-deployment benefit note disclosure, and the reason I want to highlight it is that it will be different next year. And so that's something to look at in next year's financial statement. There are new standards that are coming out that require the actuary to calculate that a little differently. So that note disclosure is going to look different next year, and the liability could potentially be a little different depending on what the actuary finds and the experience of the city. And then onto page 63. This is a new note disclosure this year, and that's the subsequent event regarding the component unit and the city. So there's a pretty material event that's going to occur in the coming years that will affect both the component unit, Friends of the Topeka Zoo, as well as the city. So, the city has discussed that in that note disclosure to provide more information to the users. Onto page 102 and through 132 is the stat section. This is really cool if you like a lot of information. It's 10-year trend analysis. It's demographics, it's revenues, expenditures, grants, debt that's been issued. So, you can really look at the history of the city over the last 10 years and how it's changed. So kind of a nerd like me and my staff, we really like to look at that, find interesting trend information. But it's also interesting if you want to look at how your population has changed as well. So, a lot of useful information in that part of the financial statements. And now I'm going to get on to our audit. So, what I've covered so far is the city's financial statements. Those are the city's financial statements. They're note disclosures. What I want to talk about now is our auditor's letters of communication. There's three letters in the financial statements that are ours. Okay, if we start on page one and through page three, that's our auditor's report. Throughout this report, we talk about management's responsibility, we talk about the auditor's responsibility in regard to the financial statements, but most importantly, and what everybody always wants to hear is the opinion. And so that's on the top of page two. It's a really big run-on sentence, but it talks about all the different component units of the city, and each one of those components has received an unmodified opinion. So that's the highest opinion these financial statements can receive. It speaks to the directive that you give your staff and how they implement that directive and the internal controls that they put in place. And that takes us on to page 139. And this is the one I think the finance department's a little excited about. So if you go on to page 139, this note disclosure talks about our work over internal controls. We can't give an opinion on the internal controls, but we would tell you if there are material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. This is the fifth year that we've worked on the audit. It's the first year we haven't had any material weaknesses, and the first year we haven't had any significant deficiencies. So, they are very excited, and we're very excited for them. It speaks to the staff that you have in your finance department. They are very diligent about working with other departments, making sure internal controls are in place, and they play nice with the other departments. It's Nikki and Simon and Rochelle and the people in that department, but it's not just them, it's the people in the water department, municipal court, neighborhood relations, and examples like purchasing. Jay in Purchasing emailed me and saying, "I know there's new compliance standards coming out. We have to update our policy. Here's what we have. Let's work together to update it." And talking to us throughout the year to update that and make sure those things are in place. They're doing a really great job, and that speaks, that is very well, that's evidenced in this particular letter, that there aren't any material weaknesses, there aren't any significant deficiencies, there's no non-compliance with laws or regulations as they relate to the financial statements. So we want to go on to page 141 to 142. And this is our last note, our last letter in the financial statements. This particular letter talks about the work that we do over federal awards. So any entity that receives more than $750,000 in federal aid has to have what we call a single audit. So we go through and we rotate which one of those programs that we are going to look at. We have to look at at least 25% of them every year. This particular year, we selected the Community Development Block Grant. We go out there and we don't just look at invoices and make sure that the revenue is posted correctly, we look at a lot of really detailed compliance information, applications on individuals that are going to receive funding, environmental concerns, and that particular program received an unmodified opinion. Those records, those files, when you open them up, are very easy to follow at that particular department, and we felt like the unmodified opinion was definitely warranted over that particular program. So, if you read that last letter, it details a lot about the work that we've done over the single audit. The programmer's received an unmodified opinion as well as that portion of the audit as well. Any questions for me?
Well, first of all, I would like to congratulate Simon, if you could stand up, and your staff.
I'm a little scared to say it.
You're a lone ranger tonight. Okay, so for those of you who are watching at home, Simon is the person that was working on the audit and his team, and this is spectacular. This is absolutely spectacular. We talk in our community about transparency and how we handle our finances is one of the biggest markers on how that occurs. An audit is nothing but a group of independent individuals come into our city and they take a look at every single one of our financial policies, and they make sure, very detailed, that we are following those policies and that we have proper internal controls. For a city of our size and for the number of programs that we manage, for us to have no comments on our audit is nothing less than just remarkable. So Simon, thank you so much. Do we have any comments or questions from the body for our auditor? I'm the only nerd that's excited about this? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Absolutely.
City Manager, next presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have Nikki Lee from our finance director. She's going to discuss our first quarter report relative to the budget and performance. Nikki?
Okay, thank you. Just getting all the finance out of the way. So of course, thank you for that. That rounded off 2017, and now we are squarely into 2018. So tonight is our first quarter report for the quarter ending March 31, 2018, and as you know, we will give you a quarterly report throughout the rest of the year. I've kind of switched up the format a little bit tonight, so afterwards, want to send any thoughts about what you missed or wanted added, then feel free to send that to me. As you know, this is posted on our website, so everybody can view it. In addition, additionally to that, you should have hard copies, but certainly whoever wants a mini version of that, we can make that available to you. Another note I would say is that being the first quarter, it is pretty early in the year to be tracking a lot of our revenues, so we will go more in-depth as the year goes on. We'll be able to provide a lot more analysis and kind of forecasting for year-end. So just starting off, wanted to highlight the major revenues in the city. First of all, total revenues, all funds combined, are up 4%, so that's to be expected. We'd expect year-over-year that we would have overall, all of our funds increasing, and that you will definitely see in most of our major funds, which I'll walk you through here in a few minutes. General fund revenues overall are up 1.24% year-to-date over last year, and that is mostly due to property tax. So property tax is up 3%. We get a few major dispersments of property tax throughout the year, and this is one of them, so we do track that throughout the year. General fund sales tax decreased 1.18%. So that is one item that we are tracking, just kind of as an indication of the overall economy, certainly something we're watching as we prepare for the 2019 budget, and something that we'll continue to have conversations on regarding where we're projecting that to go in the future. Water fees are up 3.7%, which of course was planned. That's due to the rate increase. Wastewater fees are up 3.3%, which again reflects mostly the rate increase. And then franchise fees are up 3.6%, and that's the payment passed on to us from our electric or gas and our cable. So that one does vary quite a bit, but of course, any movement upwards is a good thing in the franchise fee world. Special highway is flat, and the stormwater fees are flat. On the special highway note, that's something that we'll be discussing with you all through the budget process. That is a reflection on what we receive from the city and the county, and something that we budget a lot of our major operations for streets in this fund. So certainly something that we are watching. It's a trend that we knew about and that we've been following for a couple of years, but we will be discussing that further kind of as needed. And then stormwater fee, that is something that we'll simply have to kind of catch up with the rate increase that was passed, but at this point, it is flat year-over-year. So on the expenditure side, total expenses, all funds combined, are also up 4%, so just as you'd expect, our revenues are up, but we also have quite a few expenses that keep pace with the revenues. So we're pretty much exactly where we plan to be. General funds expenses are up 1.83%, which is really right on target to where the overall revenues were. Water expenses are up 4%, and a lot of that is the capital improvement area, which again was as expected and planned in the fund. Stormwater expenses are relatively flat with the prior year, which is right on track with the revenues. And wastewater expenses so far are just barely below, and really that has to do with the timing of when and where they pay for their capital projects. So we do expect that to catch up throughout the rest of the year. And then on this note, in reviewing all the other fund expenditures and revenues are included in your document, I didn't see anything that was of note or certainly something to highlight either on the revenue or the expense side as something is kind of to watch out for, but there is an analysis of all the funds included throughout the quarterly And then just a reminder to you all that this quarterly report and all others are posted on our website for everybody to view. And then an additional reminder that we do update all of our open government portals, not only on the monthly basis, but on a quarterly basis. And specifically of note, the performance portal is one that we update every quarter, so we've just recently completed updates for the first quarter of 2018, and that has a lot of additional information even outside of our finances that would be really good for you all and the public to keep track of. So with that, that concludes the first quarter of 2018.
Thank you for your presentation, Nikki. Does the body have questions or comments for Nikki? Seeing none, thank you very much. Final presentation, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Next is our city planning first quarter report, and Director Finder is here to present it.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, everything body. This is Development and Growth Management Report is something that the planning department publishes every month. So what we're showing to you today is a culmination of those first three months, really looking at some of the development trends and growth trends through our permit tracking. And we'll compare it to last year, as you'll see here. We're coming off a year where, if you remember, commercial permits the last couple of years have been very high. The size and the value have been actually historic highs, pre-recession highs. So it certainly is something to watch for, but as my expectation is that's got to be tempered somewhat in this year, and you'll see here some data that reflects that. But, starting off, we show an overall increase in our total number of permits from this time last year, 6%. But as you can see on the right-hand side there, those columns are the commercial side. They are dipping down a little bit overall. When you dig a little bit deeper into those residential and commercial permits, residential is the reason we have more, are issuing more permits is because on the residential side, in particular, the additions and improvements to existing residential is very, very high compared to this time last year. And as Ms. Lee indicated, we don't want to put too much into the first quarter, a lot of months to play out, but we wanted to compare it to last quarter, last year's first quarter, to give you some sense of at least how we're doing out of the gate. And then the downward arrow there for commercial permits, we've done 44. That's a 10% reduction, which actually isn't that bad of a reduction compared to, we're at, like I said, some fairly high, historical highs here in the last couple of years following the recession. So, that's not as much of a concern, particularly in the first quarter. When you dig a little deeper though into those, into the square footage and the size and the scale of the projects that we're seeing, we are seeing, again, a dip in square footage, 20% overall. And probably take this point to remind everybody, we had some very significant projects last year at this time. We had Cyrus Hotel, we had Federal Home Loan Bank, we had Reesers. I mean, those are huge, those are kind of a, a little bit of a perfect storm, if you will, for a quarter. So I, again, don't want to read too much into this. As is, you'll see here in the next slide, the value is 50% less in terms of overall permit value than it was at this time last year. Again, we would have been doing, at high expectations, to hold that value from last year, so we'll see how the year plays out, but this is not a surprise, knowing the size of the type of projects we had last year. And I know we all also will have, we do our anticipating several higher-profile projects coming into the pipeline this year. Downtown, Wheatfield, and those, there's a couple others that we're expecting. On the residential side, residential growth, all of the permits are up. Our overall new unit count, which is that top left-hand number, is down 20%. We issued permits for 22 new units within the city this quarter, but as I said, additions are way up. So existing homes, existing residential improvements, additions to those, we are seeing a spike there that we hadn't seen last year. When we look at our overall share of the county and the city's share of that, we are, there's virtually no change here from the end of last year. We are still 47, almost 48% of all new units in the county are occurring in the city, and that's stable. The one thing we, we're trying to tweak a little bit and try and present it in a different way, we have this metric of prime vacant lots, which are platted lots since 1970, many of which were probably since 1990. But we had about, we keep showing you this every quarter. It's about 1,000-plus lots that have been platted since then but are not built on yet, so they're vacant. But we wanted to put that in a little more perspective, so we did a little, digging a little deeper, that equates, from a single-two-family and three-family perspective, about 2,000 units. 30% of those have, actual streets have been put in, meaning a benefit district has been approved, streets have been put in, infrastructure is there. And so that's, that's a lot of platted lots that were, folks have not come forward to put forth a benefit district yet. 17 years of platted lot inventory, that's one way of looking at all these lots, how many years of growth at our current pace would it take to build on all those? So that's one way of looking at it. Another way of looking at it is, if you just look at the single-family lots, that inventory is about, with streets, that's about seven years' worth of inventory at our current pace. Again, a lot of those don't have streets, and they come along, in fact, I think there's some on the agenda tonight that will have improvement districts coming forth for them, so they will be getting streets as well. And in terms of distribution, the, again, I'm not sure why, we'll have to check the computer on this. This continues not to show up well. If this did show up well, you would see that the commercial permits are going to be all downtown or along the 470 corridor, which is where our regional commercial centers are. That's kind of where you would expect it. Residential is fairly evenly distributed. Since there's a lot of additions, it's even more distributed. Since there's a lot of additions, it's even more distributed centrally, I would say, as opposed to strictly on the fringe. Some of our top projects this quarter that were issued permits, Grace Med, very exciting reuse of the Dylan's Grocery Store at Lane and Untuned and Lane. They're moving into a 20,000-plus square-foot facility, punched windows in there where windows never were, which is kind of cool. So that's coming along very well. We also have a, I believe this is a new biomat, this is taking, which is the plasma blood-giving business. That's on Sixth. And this is the former Walgreens at 29th and Gage, for those of you who were curious as to what's happening there. Scientific Games is another major interior remodel on Jefferson in the South Industrial Park area. It's a, they work with the Lottery, I believe, on developing games. Very top secret. And then last but not least, our fourth highest value of the quarter was Kansas Secured Title. They're just moving next door in the 3,400 block of Fair Lawn, going from a tenant to their own their own building. So that's finally going up. So as I said, we do this every month, publish it every month. This is your special kind of quarterly roundup, if you will, but if you want more information or if the public wants more information, we do have the individual reports out at topeka.org on the planning website under DGM Reports. So if there's any other questions I can be of help with, I'd be happy to.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'm a little disturbed by the fact that less than half of the homeowners' permits are being pulled for the city despite the fact that we have somewhere between 80 and 90% of the population. What are we doing as the city to rectify that?
Deputy Mayor, we have several policies in place, including our growth management plan that was adopted three years ago, to really manage what happens outside of our city in terms of further subdividing. I'm not, I didn't show you this, that's another way of looking at it, but when you look at the number of new lots being created outside in that three-mile area because of the utility and subdivision regulation policies, it's it's pretty dramatic how it has dropped off because as we're trying to plan for our future growth, and it's hard to do that as as thing as land is chopped up really and in an inefficient or not a cost-effective manner for our urban density. So those are in place, but when you, that particular number, that's that's county-wide, so we don't control beyond or we don't have subdivision authority.
Well, and and control is not necessarily what, I mean, we need to incentivize and encourage. So do we need to look at dropping the fee for permits in the city? I mean, how do we encourage people to build within the city? We can't force them to do that, obviously, but, I mean, if this hasn't changed in two years, we're doing something wrong. So, I mean, we need to, we need to take some action here and make changes. So what what can we do to get the, I mean, 40, that's less than half despite having the vast majority of the population for this county. Something's wrong.
Well, actually, that number is fairly strong from our, for our history.
It's not changing.
Correct. It has not changed. If you look at the three, we're probably 70% of the units in the three-mile are happening within the city. So is it is, it is a direct relation to the housing market and new construction and having availability of lots. As I just showed, there are over 2,000 units already platted and approved.
Yeah.
To be built on. So from a planning standpoint, from a, from a being ready standpoint, if you will, we are.
We're ready.
We're trying to tell you, yeah, we're ready.
But they're not coming.
That is.
So.
Not, 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 not that this is any other, this is happening in a lot of places.
True, and I understand that. I'm looking for options to incentivize. So and I don't expect answers tonight on that, obviously, but I do think that it warrants taking a look at what we need to do to incentivize construction within the city. And if it's dropping the price on the permits to get people to encourage to do that, then I think we need to look at that. Because four, I mean, 44% over two years seems very, very low to me, and I I'm concerned about that, especially given that we're so desperate to have people build and live within the city limits. I think at least it warrants a second look.
Councilman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. It may be that if you or or a number of us are interested, we should look at where that development actually is. Shawnee County is a big county, and there are other municipalities within Shawnee County as well. So in terms of the the comparison inside the city limits and outside, you just said that there really isn't that much going on in the three-mile limit. Is that correct?
I'm saying that whatever's happened, it's about, it's not the the new lots that are being created that is correct. There, we are not seeing, because of our rules and our policies that are in place, there's a lot of existing lots that are already there. We're not creating more new lots necessarily. In fact, it's it's a handful every year. So we're not exacerbating the issue. In fact, we're doing the opposite. We're trying to allow the city's infrastructure and lots that are already in place to be the focus of our energy, not creating more sprawl. So that would be something I think is as much control as we as we ever had. Now, you just have to have the market come along, and that's, that's, that's the issue.
Thank you, because I think you've done a good job with the plan, and there's a limit, you know, to team, team effort here. We've been investing in downtown, we've been investing in bikeways, we've been investing in neighborhoods, which are not the planning department's issue.
Agreed.
In order to 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 raise that, raise those boats, if you will. And so it it might deserve more, but I I think that that's a, that's what we'd hope for, it sounds like, with what you're reporting.
Yeah, you know, one of the, one of the examples that isn't in here but will be in the next quarter is a, is a 33-unit loft development downtown. That's, and that, that'll more than, more than 100% increase in what we just showed you tonight. So, you know, I think, like I said, the market needs to come along. I, I see, we see signs that it is in in the downtown investment. That's a, that's a great example.
Well, and Wheatfield is coming too, right?
Right. And that won't have the residential component for a while, but in terms of residential growth, we'll see more.
Councilman Lesser, then Deputy Mayor.
The other thing I would point out in defense of Bill and and his policies, one of the things that we all brought up when we we had our retreat and our strategic planning retreat is, and I do believe that that 501 has good leadership right now, but the reality of it is too, is there's many families that are choosing to to build or move to school districts such as Washford Rural Seamen. Quite frankly, we can't ignore that that's a fact. And in in talking with the realtors, that's a fact too. So I think as as we identified in that meeting, as a city, we're looking forward to partnering with them strategically to to help do what we can do to do to improve that, and I'm looking forward to that. But I, you know, the white elephant or the elephant in the room is the reality of what that is.
Which is Zillow, by the way.
Well, and just just to give you guys all an update, pardon me, Deputy Mayor. I've already met with the Sunflower Association. We have not only met just myself and the Sunflower Association to talk about what the challenges are, so that we can also have an invitation to the developer community to see how we could work together and what policies we need to be working on. But in addition to that, they were very proactive. We've already had a meeting with Dr. Anderson and with the school district, and Zillow depends on Great Schools, which is the platform that provides the information. The information is outdated, severely outdated. So we are, we are collaborating to create information to pass out to families so that we could start changing the perspective of our school, because our school is a great school. They're basing themselves on outdated information, but absolutely great point. And like you said, it's in our strategic plan, and we're already tackling that. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So just a quick follow-up. I will agree with all of you that we have great policies. What I disagree with is waiting for the market. I don't know any private business that waits for market to come and then expects to make money. They get out there and they advertise, and they hustle for that business. And I think that at some level, that the city should do the same thing. We want the community to grow, so what can we do to make it ridiculously easy for developers to come in here and build homes, for people to renovate their homes? How do we encourage people to want to do that as opposed to the county? I've heard that it's 10% more expensive to build within the city than it is in the county. What can we do? And granted, I realize that some of that is there are much less stringent building codes in the county and therefore much less safe buildings. I will wholeheartedly agree that there is a viable public safety reason for holding people to higher standards, absolutely. But having said that, if you're going to charge more, you've got to deliver more. And so I absolutely think that as a community, we need to get out there and hustle for that business and and get those folks to want to build in the city. And whatever we can do to do that, I think is absolutely critical to our our future. We've got to grow, got to, got to grow.
Thank you for your comments. Additional comments from the body? Bill, thank you for a great presentation. We now proceed with the roll call.
Councilmembers Heller.
Here.
Clear. Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Padilla.
Here.
Jensen.
Present.
Mays.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Lesser.
Here.
And Mayor DeLausso.
Here. We now proceed with the early public comment session of our meeting. The first person signed up to speak is Mr. Tuck Duncan.
Thank you. I am Tuck Duncan, citizen of Topeka. I'm getting too old to wait till the last agenda item, so I appreciate the first agenda item. I don't want that against my tongue. Later tonight, you will consider item 5F, a resolution asking the Kansas congressional delegation to intercede by requesting Amtrak to maintain a full-service facility in Topeka. Topeka, the home of the Atchison, Topeka, and Santa Fe, home to Cyrus K. Holiday, AT&amp;FS First President and author of its charter, and we may be left without a full-service depot? Really? I love trains. I've traveled the rails my whole life. My mother and I would take the New York Central from Chicago to New York. I rode the Southwest Chief from Chicago to LA with my brother in the late 50s to see the new place called Disneyland. I traveled the Topeka to Garden City route periodically. I have traveled the Northeast Corridor from DC to New York and ridden the Pacific Circliner on the west, along the ocean. It's beautiful. You don't have a full-service station just to sell tickets. Yes, I have an Amtrak app on my smartphone. I buy e-tickets. I use the Penn Station and Union Station and the Topeka Station as a place to wait and relax while I await my train. The older I get, the more I need that waiting room and the attendant to wake me up when I fall asleep because the train is 30 or 40 or 60 minutes behind schedule. I support this positive action, but I worry we may be too little and too late. I am disappointed that the action on this item did not take place earlier. I'm not sure why public officials could not have expressed a sense of outrage earlier, but I do thank you, Sylvia, for bringing up the issue. This is not about saving one job, it's about fighting for every job we have in Topeka and especially those that have an impact on an entire industry such as the train service. This is not just about one job, but about other issues surrounding having someone at the station, general customer service, safety issues, and building maintenance. The current station was built in 1950 by the AT&amp;SF Railway as a replacement for the former Topeka Harvey House, which itself was opened in 1878 as part of the original Santa Fe Depot and remained open until 1940. A 140-year tradition of full service is about to cease absent quick intervention. The train service is important to us as a capital city. We need to fight to keep the service at full service levels. One hopes that this is not the start of an effort towards declining service. It could become a self-fulfilling prophecy. Eliminate some service, which means less usage, less usage, and translates to eliminating the service altogether, and this at a time when there's discussion of recreating the old Lone Star train route from Kansas City to the Dallas-Fort Worth area. The National Passenger Railway Corporation, doing business as Amtrak, was founded in '71 as a quasi-public corporation to operate many US passenger rail services. It receives a combination of state and federal subsidies. With receiving public revenue comes a responsibility to ensure that the services it provides are adequate, and at the very least, providing one employee for our station seems a minimal request. Full service ends Friday, folks. Please support the resolution unanimously and act damn fast.
The next person signed up to speak is Ms. Crystal Brim.
Thank you all very much, and thank you, sir. I do appreciate being able to speak. We know that our city was founded by the railroad. We know that this new Cyrus Hotel that we're so proud of is named after our Cyrus K. Holiday. That should say enough. I am a train traveler, have been since I was four. My dad worked for the Santa Fe for 50 years. We cannot lose our station. It is mandatory that we keep it open. We are the capital city. It would be a real crime for us not to have this service to our community and to our state. And as I am a traveler, I know what this particular agent does. I'm at the station, I see what he does. And I will take my remaining two minutes to give you a quick two stories. Last night, I was buying tickets. There was a gentleman comfortably waiting, sound asleep in his chair inside the station, waiting for the train to arrive. He's in an unlocked, safe building, and he is waiting. If Jim Woods hadn't woken him up, he wouldn't have gotten on the train at 12:35. He would have slept right through it. My other example was last August, when I was at the station, elegant at 12:30 at night, buying tickets. A young man came in from Hollis, Queens, New York, to a 10K state. He got off the train, his ride couldn't pick him up. He visited with the agent. The agent explained to him that he could have Uber, Uber, whatever, take him to Manhattan. So his parents wired him some money, and he was able to get there. If he arrived in Topeka to a closed station at 12:30 at night, what welcome would that be to him, coming to our state to attend one of our fine universities? And so those are just two examples I've seen in the very near past. And I really appreciate you trying to do everything you can for us because it's so important for our future of our community, since we are trying to move ahead and not take one step forward and two steps back. So, any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Ronald Dean.
What that gentleman said. Second, and I don't know what much more to add. The train station's been there 140 years, and it's the only connection I can see for the capital of Kansas in the outside world. Train comes through there every day, and you can get on that train and ride all the way to Washington DC, and then you can catch another train to go to New York City. It's very important. There are cities that would kill for an Amtrak station in their their town to haul people around. This just doesn't come by every day, and once you lose it, then you're not going to get it back. And if we don't have that station down there to show what the city of Topeka wants for their their citizens, they can easily run that train through Ottawa. Why do they want to come up to Topeka? You don't have a ticket agent, you don't have service, you're going to lose passengers if you don't have a ticket agent. And then, you don't have anything at all. And I could go on for hours, but I don't want to waste your time. But I do think that you guys have supported the Amtrak station through proclamations. We've had National Train Day events down there. We've put those together. Sylvia Ortiz has helped with those. And what we've done is increased passenger service by having those events. There's too many people in this town that don't realize we have a train coming through here, and that they can go all over the world, or all over the United States in that train. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Monica Shag.
My name is Monica Shrag. I have lived in Topeka my whole life, but I'm a little ashamed to admit this is the first time I've ever been to a city council meeting. I didn't even know where to go. I had to look it up online. So, clearly, this topic means a great deal to me. I'm just hoping my few words will make a difference. I've lived in Topeka my whole life. I've taught in the public schools for over 20 years. I feel that I'm qualified to speak on behalf of Jim, since I am a lifelong resident of the city, and I do ride the train a few times a year. My family also rides the train. I was in disbelief when I heard the news that his job would be eliminated. You see, he does more than just sell tickets. This is a vital component of his job, as there are those without the means or the know-how to purchase tickets online. However, I want to focus on the other areas. He is a welcoming presence to those just entering or returning to our city. In many ways, his employment is a thankless job. He's working while most of the residents of our city are still sleeping. Most people have no idea what he does, but those of us that ride the rails are comforted to know that he's there at the beginning and the end of our trip. He is there before 12:30 AM in the morning. Wary passengers just beginning their journey here in Topeka wait to board the train. What will they do without a waiting room at this early hour? What will they do when the wind chill drops below zero degrees? What will they do when they have kids to deal with and Jim's not there to help them out? Then there are the passengers just arriving. Jim is welcoming and helpful. He is there at 5:30 AM when the train arrives from the west. Hospitable and friendly, why would we want to eliminate this from our city? So much negativity associated with this place we live. He is a bright spot that makes our city a better place. From selling tickets to carrying bags, he is a reliable worker that many strangers and friends have come to count on. What a positive first impression he gives to those that enter the capital city. I challenge you to, before removing him from this job, I beg of you to see him in action, know firsthand what he does before blindly taking him away from this crucial service to our capital city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Just so everybody knows, it is not our decision that this be happening. We're absolutely in support of keeping Jim at the station, but this is an Amtrak decision, not a City of Topeka decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, I think they know that. I just think that they want to express their concern and so that we will support the resolution.
I just want everyone out there in TV land to know that.
I think they know that. We went from no person down there to we got one, we fought one. This is about the third time we fought it, but I think they want to express their concern, their approval for us to approve it so it could move forward to the people.
Yes, and I'm so grateful for everyone's comments and thoughts on that. I just want to make perfectly clear that it's not our decision. Thank you.
But it is our decision to support it or not?
No, I wholeheartedly agree. It is our decision to support it, but not to remove him.
All right. We now proceed with the consent agenda.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of March 31, 2018, through April 27, 2018, and enumerating set expenditures therein. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller, granting Rotary Club of Topeka an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 et cec concerning noise prohibitions. C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz, granting Faith Family Life Center an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 et cec concerning noise prohibitions. D is minutes of the regular meeting of May 8, 2018, and there is a list of cereal malt beverage limited license applications before you.
We have the consent agenda read to all of us. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilman Cohen.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Councilman Cohen approves. Deputy Mayor seconds. If there's no comments or questions, we now proceed with the voting. Nine having voted yes. Motion passes unanimously. We now proceed with the action items. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
A is setting a public hearing date of June 5, 2018, for consideration of imposing special assessments for Miller's Reserve, Horseshoe Bend, and Misty Harbor.
City Manager.
Mayor, governing body, tonight, this is establishing a date for a public hearing for the special assessments. Unless there are questions, we'll be covering this item next week when we have the, or at the next meeting when we have the hearing on June 5.
I know that we have new council members on board and that you may not be accustomed to seeing the item of the specials. Does anybody have any questions that you want to ask before we go ahead and we make the approval of just the motion for the hearing? Okay, seeing none, what's the pleasure of the body? Deputy Mayor.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Councilman Cohen seconds. If there's no additional questions or comments, we now proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item B, resolution, if the clerk would read.
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, in accordance with Section 1860-10 of the Topeka Municipal Code, amending a conditional use permit to allow for the expansion of a pet crematorium to include one additional cremator and a building to enclose the cremator on property zoned O and I II, Office and Institutional District located at 1137 Southwest Gage Boulevard in the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
City Manager.
Mayor, governing body, the planning commission considered this item, updating conditional use permit. Director Feinder will go through some of the details related to this particular project.
Thank you. The, as read, this is an expansion of an existing pet crematorium in an 1137 Gage, 37th Gage. This has been operating since 2007, when they had their initial conditional use permit. The zoning's office and institutional, too. It is a sort of medium-intensity office. So, this was allowed. What they want to do with this expansion is really double their operation. There is a, about a 240 square foot carport-looking structure that they have in the back in their rear yard. Right now, they want to duplicate that, add a second cremator to that for their business. The issues that came up during the process with the neighborhood and planning commission included basically mitigating any impacts that might be environmentally. There is, there was some concern when we went through this, but if you, one thing we found out, and we know from the past, is this burns at such a high rate, there are very little, if any, noticeable residue in the air. And so, KD, and this is required to be permitted by KDHE before it came to you, it has been for those circumstances. So, there's, from a smoke and odor standpoint, you don't visibly detect that at all. The perception or the look of the structure that is placed there, that also was dealt with during the planning commission, and staff recommended conditions to basically have a little more screening between the structures. These are, although they're carport-looking structures, they do have a smoke stack on them, and so, that might be a little more industrial type of a character. So, we limited the size of that smoke stack. We asked for more screening, landscape screening between these structures and the property to the west. This whole property, and I'll just give you an idea. Here, I think I have a picture. That's what the current structure looks like now. The entire property is screened from a fence standpoint, but we are recommending more vertical landscaping between the new structure and the existing structure and the property to the west. So, that was basically the policy issues that we dealt with. We both, both staff and planning commission do recommend approval based on those conditions. I'll stand for questions.
Prior to discussion, we do not have anybody signed up for public comment at this time. So, does the body have any questions? Okay. This is one of those zoning matters that requires that we talk about ex parte communication. So, please indulge me as I remind everybody that prior to proceeding with the vote, each member of the governing body who has engaged in ex parte communication with any individual, either in favor of or against of the matter being considered, must state that this communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in this communication, you are able to fairly, objectively, and impartially consider the measure based on the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the planning commission minutes, the staff report and its attachments, the public comments made during the planning commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to that matter. This declaration is required due to the fact that the governing body is acting as a quasi-judicial role, making this decision, and must demonstrate that the appropriate due process has been afforded. So, we will go through each of the council members just for the disclosure prior to the vote. Councilwoman Hiller.
No ex parte communication.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
None, to my recollection.
Councilman Emerson.
No communications.
Councilman Padilla.
No communications.
Deputy Mayor.
In the words of Councilman Harmon, I got none.
Councilmember Mays.
None.
Councilman Cohen.
None.
Councilman Lesser.
As referenced on the last page of our handout tonight, the sign-up sheet, I actually attended the neighborhood meeting and had communications with all involved, which would not hinder me being able to make an impartial decision.
Thank you. I have read the minutes of the meetings, but I am able to make an impartial decision. That being, Deputy, Councilman Lesser.
I have motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval. Councilwoman Hiller seconds the motion. We now proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed with item C, resolution for tax increment financing, if the clerk would read.
C is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, establishing the City of Topeka's policy for tax increment financing.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee did meet multiple times, and at this point, I think it's appropriate to turn it over to Councilwoman Hiller to give the report from the committee.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. Well, as Chair of the City's Policy and Finance Committee, with credit to my colleagues, Councilman Emerson and Councilman Cohen. Nobody knows who Emerson is?
Henderson.
I am really proud to introduce the May 15 version of this ordinance. It was first proposed to council on the 20th of February by staff, who had taken the initiative to develop that policy, since we're doing more development work, as Deputy Mayor talks about. There was some questions on our part about it, and we wanted to give plenty of time for developers or citizens and advocates to speak up. We did have good participation in those, the policy committee meetings. We actually had one party develop a whole red line draft. There was, so, lots of communication. I want to credit Nikki Lee from the finance staff and Mary Feeney from the legal staff as well, because they sat with us and worked through it. At this point, not only do all of the conferees that were involved, most of them have written in and said they support this current version, it is also three pages shorter than it was when it started. And with that, if there are questions, I would probably ask Nikki Lee to come up, but I'm happy to move to approve.
I just want to make the comment of congratulating you for just such an excellent job of having the inclusion of the developers in the process, just hearing out the staff also in the collaboration that we had. This is a really good product.
Thank you.
I didn't make a motion. Oh, she made a motion, I'm sorry. We have a motion by Councilwoman Hiller, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor.
I just want to briefly echo my comment, or echo the comments, that I think this is excellent work. This is our city in business to go into business with other people, and I'm excited to see the growth that this creates.
Seeing no additional comments, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed with item D, ordinance of false alarms, if the clerk would read.
D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout concerning false fire alarms creating Chapter 8.55 of the Topeka Municipal Code.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, governing body. After the discussion that the governing body had related to this item, we did go through and make some changes to the ordinance. And at this time, I'd like Fire Marshal Mike Martin to come forward and go through those changes, and then stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Councilman Mayor. So, at the last council meeting, you voiced your concern about the $25 registration fee. So, we've done away with the $25 registration fee, and we will just register alarms as they come in, so we can keep track of them. And then, we've also changed the matrix to better reflect your wishes. And so, we went from zero to three, which is still at no charge, from four to 10, went from $25 to $50. Eleven to 20, went from $50 to 100. 21 to 30, went from 75 to 150. 31 to 50, went from 100 to 200, and 51 or more went to $500 per occurrence.
Does the body have any questions? Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. First to comment, good work, teams. I missed last week, and it sounds like you really did some great work on this ordinance. And you, as well. Just for the benefit of the public, I know I had some questions to prepare for the meeting. Could you talk a little bit about who this ordinance would apply to and how it's different from like a security alarm setup?
This is going to apply to commercial structures, and it's going to be only for systems, fire protection systems, such as fire alarms, sprinklers, and hood systems. So, it will really only be dealing with the, it won't have anything to do with residential properties. It will deal exclusively with commercial.
I'm familiar in a commercial situation, you know, small business, where you've got your security alarm, but it's got a button on it for fire alarm. Is that not, is that included or not included in this program?
If it's a monitored commercial system, then it would be included in the program. If somebody is manually pushing the alarm and there's not an emergency there, that would be considered a false alarm. Now, if they push the medical, or if they push the police, or some other type of emergency was present, or if there was an actual fire emergency, then it wouldn't generate a false alarm.
Okay, so that, I just was, in terms of having to register with the department, I wasn't sure how somebody would know.
Right.
Whether they were supposed to register.
We're going to, we're going to be dealing with that, Councilwoman. We've got a list, a database put together of what the monitor alarms are, at least some of them. some of them. We still have some work to do on it, but we'll be sending out letters notifying the individuals. The whole process will begin with the design phase, so when new construction comes in, and they go ahead and start to do the review for a fire alarm system, we'll be registering them at that time, and informing the occupants, owners of the buildings, about the registration policy. So our plan on this whole thing is about education. We want to educate, and we want to make the building safer, so we're going to be reaching out to the alarm companies, to the alarm users, and to the new customers that come in to build in our city, to make sure that they understand what the policies are.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just had a question for legal, or maybe even the city clerk. I downloaded the agenda packet tonight, and it looks like it still has the old, the previous version in it. Can you, can you verify? I guess my concern is, since this is something that's going to have some teeth as far as fines and things, it's possible that I'm wrong, but
I have the updated one.
Maybe it's just the PDF that
Yeah, that's my check. Package's too long. Package's tempo.
Yeah, I believe it's got the footer May 10th, 2018.
Okay.
And it shows those increase in fees right after line 92. Let me look at the other, some of the other ones just to verify.
It might just be that the PDF didn't get updated.
Just let me check, that's a good question, so.
Download the right one?
Well, there's a possibility that I did not, but, and let me check, and like I said, I kind of beg your pardon on this, because
Yes, this is a correct one. It's got the footer 510, and the old version is in there as well, and it's got a footer of five, five two.
Okay, well, thank you, sorry for the interruption.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Ortiz? We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor, if there's no other comments or questions, we proceed with the voting.
Oh, sorry, did push our.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voting yes, the motion passes. We now proceed to item E, demolition request. If the clerk would read.
E is a demolition request for three buildings located at 618, 630, and 632 South Kansas Avenue, within the boundaries of the South Kansas Avenue Commercial National Historic District, in the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas, pursuant to Topeka Municipal Code, Section 18255030.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, you have before you requests for demolition of three buildings in the downtown area. That request is coming to you. Landmark Commission denied the request to do the demolition. State law allows the appeal of that decision to the local governing body, so that's why it is now before you for consideration. This time, ask Director Bill Finder to come forward and provide additional details about this project.
Good evening, once again. I thought it might be helpful to explain the Landmarks Commission and how, and their findings that they have to make, and how that differs from what you are doing tonight. Because there is, I do get that question a lot, and I think it's very helpful to clear that up and distinguish the two. So, proper course, demolition in a national historic district is generally not supported. As you could surmise, that undermines the whole idea of preserving assets that that district protects. And when you lose too many, you lose that integrity of that district. So this is not a light subject when they come before the Landmarks Commission, but they do have a different standard, or I call it a fairly high bar to get over, to say that that is something that does not impact the district. For demolitions, the main question that they answer is, will this damage or destroy the integrity of the district? So anytime you're talking about removing an asset, a structure, without replacing it with a light, with a structure that's compatible to the district, yeah, that's a very tough finding to make. Their vote was four to three, so it was very close, but they, their two tests, if you will, are to really look at not just the structures that are being demolished, but also what's going back in its place. And in this case, the properties, the buildings in question here are not contributors to the district. They are not, and in layman's terms, they don't rise to levels of historic integrity that the other properties do in the district. That being said, the Landmarks Commission looks at what is going in its places, if those are being taken down. Is the replacement use either compatible, or of a nature that is consistent with that district? Here, a plaza is a brand-new use introduced to the district, to the downtown, ever. There has never been a public plaza on Kansas Avenue or within the history of this district. So this is foreign, this foreign use, it does not come back and replace those buildings, then it is looked at as an incompatible situation. So their findings, their assessment kind of ends there, and they cannot make that finding that something basically foreign to the district would not, would not damage the integrity of the district. So that's where you come in. So the appeal that comes before you tonight for these demolitions, you look at it in a little bit, a little bit of different light. Your bar is not as, quite as high, you have a little more flexibility, but state law does outline your findings to make. Number one, that there is no prudent or feasible alternative to the demolitions. In this case, when you look at the plaza, we have, actually in our historic district guidelines, which have been adopted for this historic district, revitalization of downtown is a priority, is one of the major guidelines. We would not be instituting a historic district if that was, if that was not intended to help revitalize downtown and have an economic impact. So, given that that is the primary goal of the district, and a guiding principle for appeals, then you have to ask yourself, if plaza is a key component to that economic revitalization, where is it best located? It would be best located in the district it's trying to revitalize. So, so being within the district is, is the alternative. So having it two blocks away, for instance, not going to have the same economic impact as what, as you would on Kansas Avenue in the district. So the location becomes, in the district, has the alternative. Now, now the second layer of that is, where within the district? And that gets to your second finding that you need to recognize and make tonight, and that is, has all reasonable planning occurred to minimize harm to the, to the properties and the district? In this case, there are three things that are being done that would do that. Number one is the actual location, as I said, where should it occur? Well, of all the properties in the historic district, this is, this is undoubtedly one of the more, what I would call, soft spots of the district. There's three non-contributing buildings, there's a parking lot, so you're not, you're not taking, removing something that is of a contributing nature to the district, of high historic value necessarily. So if you are looking for somewhere in the district to put this, this is, this would be a place to minimize harm to the rest of the district. Two other things that are being done, again, alley, we look at the right-of-ways. Right-of-ways are part of the district. They are not being closed, although there will be some temporary potential to close Seventh Street on temporary nature, but they're not being permanently closed. Alley's and streets are being maintained open to the public, so that's, that's being minimized and supported. And then lastly, the design team for the plaza has communicated with us, and in their concepts, you can see this, where they're, they're going to some lengths to at least give a nod, if you will, to the buildings that were there, and when we say a nod, that could be semblance of a, of a, of a street wall. That's very important on Kansas Avenue, for those in the historic district sense, is that you maintain that, 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 that building frontage wall along the sidewalk, the street, as well as recognizing where the entrances were to the storefronts that were there. So they are incorporate, they have shown that they, they want to incorporate that into their design. We don't have the final designs yet, so we would recommend that, we would, we would support you making those finding, those two findings tonight, that there have not been, there are no prudent or feasible alternatives to the demolitions, and that all possible planning to minimize harm to the district has occurred, with the condition that the final design for the plaza would, would be approved by the Landmarks Commission to make sure those, those elements are contained in that design. So hopefully I didn't confuse you or lead you down any paths here too much, but I'd be glad to clarify anything, as well as legal.
Do we have any questions for Bill? We do have three individuals signed up for public comment, so I would like for them to give their testimony before we go into the vote. The first person signed up to speak is Mr. Pat McAlas.
Thank you all.
Pat McAlas, and I'm the chairman of the Downtown Topeka Foundation. You know, just listening to Mr. Fyander's speech, and the things you have to consider, I think I'd rather relinquish my time, and, I mean, maybe answer questions at some point in the evening, but, you know, I'm not here to sell the plaza, I think we know about that, but I think there's more of a legal manner that you're considering than, than the comments I would care to make, so. But thank you, and I hope you support the vote.
Next person signed up to speak is Mr. Zach Sneeden.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor. This is Zach Sneeden, HTK Architects, and I represent the design team for the plaza, and also a former Landmarks Commission member, so I know what they're, what they, how they evaluate projects, and what they look for in those. I'd just like to take a few moments to highlight a couple of the points that were found in the staff report, and then also in the Landmarks Commission report that we gave to their meeting last month. But kind of recognizing the, the process that we've gone through, and I think it's, it's evolved, and it's really evolved through those conversations with the Landmarks Commission, and the design review committees, the process in place where individuals proposing projects can meet with members of the design review committee to develop some ideas, to look at what, what components might be in the project that, that highlight the historic nature of it, and in this case, is the project within, for the plaza, within the historic district. And one of the key things that I think pulled out from that was this notion of, what is that street edge along the plaza, and how do we, how do we maintain a significance of that, but also not cut the sidewalk off from the plaza? And one of those ideas that came out of that was, as you walk up and down the street, the recessed entrances that you walk through, that you pass through to go into stores and restaurants downtown, and they're recessed off the street in various shapes and sizes, and, and looking at that, using that idea as potentially a design element that we could use to, to transition people, to allow people to kind of have a ceremonial transition from the sidewalk into the plaza area, and it's used through, you'll see in the, some of the design concepts, some low planter walls that, that forms that transition, but also answers of, an issue of a grade change that we need to resolve between the sidewalk and the plaza, and so it, it forms that, kind of formalizes those entrances, gives recognition to the, the historical, or the historical entrances, that once lined that, that, that street with buildings. As Bill said, as Ms. Fyander said, this is, as we looked at where would this plaza be, should this plaza be located in downtown Topeka, and there was a strong desire that there was a, a connection directly to Kansas Avenue, and as we looked at the, the blocks that exist, really in that Sixth to Tenth Street corridor, that the 600 block on the east side is really the most fragmented block that you have there. It's got buildings that are, that are non, non-contributing to a historic district. It also has the parking lot, as Mr. Fyander mentioned, and so taking that opportunity, looking at that, its connection to Kansas Avenue, and really seeing that that is probably the prime location for this plaza to be located. And so, kind of just lastly, looking at some, and some of the language that was in the, the historical guidelines that were written, but looking at criteria, goals that, that the historic guidelines were put in place for, and they're really looking to encourage further, encourage private sector development throughout the district, and then also recognize kind of that civic pride that, that really shaped the history of, of the, of downtown, and using the plaza as kind of the, the transition of that civic pride going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Photo finish. Good job, Zach. Next person signed up to speak is Mr. Kurt Young.
Thank you, Kurt Young, Executive Director of the Topeka Lodging Association, and I've been chairing the design committee effort for about the last nine months. I think you have all the information that you need to make a decision. There's nothing that I can really add at this point, other than to make myself available to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. Okay, body, we have in front of us, City Manager?
Mayor, I wanted to pass on of the governing body. Today, Councilwoman Cleer contacted me, and she said she was not able to attend tonight, as we can tell. She asked that I pass along that she is opposed to the demolition project, and had she been here, she would have voted no on this. I just wanted to ask, she asked me to pass that along to the group.
Thank you, much appreciated. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. So in 2009, I had the distinct honor and privilege to get pulled into an effort with a bunch of, at the time, my very young peers, and we fought very hard to bring Google Fiber to this community. And out of that, I developed a passion and a love for Topeka. And as soon as that project ended, I immediately got swept up into what was the Capitol District Project, with our now mayor, and that was, that was a really, really serious conversation this community had about itself, its downtown, where we want to go, what kind of a community we really want to be. And I am still a firm believer today that that was the origin of the renaissance that we are now really experiencing. Out of the designs, the initial designs we had for downtown, through the Capitol District Project, there was always a public space, a plaza. We talked about, you know, serpentine roads that curved, we talked about big turnarounds, I mean, tons and tons of ideas, but in that instance, there was a public plaza at some point in the design, and that was too expensive, and the full design actually was, was really too expensive, and so that, that sort of went by the wayside. But a lot of the lessons learned, and the passion for downtown was started there. Following that was another plan with a group called RDG, and that plan also had a public plaza as part of it, and again, was too expensive. So this is two consultants now that have told us, we need a public plaza. So years after that, I was pulled into the branding effort that Visit Topeka had, and that plan also included a public plaza. All of these consultants have all told us that we need a public plaza, we need that anchor point in our downtown. You know, I'm a member of the Board of the Jayhawk Team, and that is a wonderful anchor, but that's not free. Not every that is a wonderful anchor, but that's not free. Not everybody can afford to experience the Jayhawk Theater, can afford to experience the Pennant, can afford to experience T-Pac. An open-air public plaza that anybody can walk into and enjoy any time of the year is truly something that our community can do for itself, for everyone here. I will be the first to admit that I hate the fact that we have to tear down buildings to build this. You know, my wife and I have spent a lot of effort restoring the building that we own on Kansas Avenue, and it's a passion of ours, we've put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into it. But in order for our community to grow, in order for our downtown to be successful, and we've tried to redevelop downtown before, and it looks nice, but it's not truly been successful, we need a public space, we need a public plaza. You know, it pains me that these buildings have to go, but my fear is, if we don't put it on the avenue, if we don't put it within the core, the heart of our city, then the core, the heart of our city will not take off, will not ignite the economic engine that we need to become the Topeka in 20 years that we want it to be. We won't be able to accomplish the goals we've set forth as a council and as a community. So, you know, it's important that we move this city ahead. It's sad that these buildings have to go, but I don't really see any other option to get it exactly where we need. I appreciate the fact that the design team has picked the area that, you know, sort of has the least casualty in it. You know, we've got a parking lot there now, that helps. Couple of the buildings are not even really that old, that helps. The one historic building we have there that's older, not in the greatest of shape. So of all the places where we could choose to knock down buildings, I think we've basically made the best decision we can. That said, knocking down buildings is a one-way street. We can't un-knock them down. There is no undo, there's no undelete, it's a permanent decision. So, and I say that because this is a serious decision we have to make, but it's one I think is critical to our city's future, and one I think we absolutely have to do. So with that, I have a very long-winded motion to make. I would move to approve this, based upon the testimony provided by Mr. Fiander and representatives of the Downtown Topeka Foundation. In addition to the information set out in our council packet, there is really no feasible or prudent alternative to the proposed demolitions. This is because the absolute best location for the downtown plaza in Topeka is Kansas Avenue. Having a plaza on Kansas Avenue will not only serve as an anchor for downtown revitalization, but will also greatly enhance economic development efforts in our downtown, and I would add, in our community. This particular location on Kansas Avenue was selected because it would have the least negative impact to the historic district. The three buildings proposed for demolition are non-contributors to the historic district, as Mr. Fiander noted. In addition, the existing parking lot was also made part of the plan in order to minimize harm. The design of the plaza highlights the street wall and necessary entries, inviting patrons into the plaza where they previously went into stores. The design leaves Kansas Avenue, 7th Street, and the alley open, and will include elements to exemplify and commemorate the history of the properties previously located at the site, as well as the usage. Based upon all of this, I move to allow demolition of the three specified properties along Kansas Avenue to provide for the construction of a public plaza, conditioned upon approval of the final designs by the Topeka Landmarks Commission. Thank you for your time and attention.
We have a second by Councilwoman Cohen. Do we have any additional questions or comments? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about the motion, because I know that the staff recommended, I think you got all the elements, there are three elements in here, but if there was particular language that we needed to use to satisfy the legal requirements of the, basically, that this is a planning and zoning issue.
You could also, because this is a quasi-judicial matter, go around the room and disclose any ex parte communications that you may have had as well, similarly to what you do with the crematorium. But this is approving the demolitions, basically in essence, that is overturning the decision that was made by the Landmarks Commission.
Is there, I'm not, I'm not certain that he covered all the three legal reasons that were in the staff recommendations for the motion. I just wanted, I'm not sure we've ever adopted a motion that was quite that long, but if...
I'm sorry, was there a staff recommendation?
The staff recommendation, which then Mr. Fiander read through, was a three-part motion. The staff says, planning staff recommends a motion finding that there are, one, no prudent and feasible alternatives to the proposed demolition at this time, two, that all reasonable planning to minimize harm to the subject properties and surrounding historic district has occurred, and three, it would be conditioned on the Landmarks Commission approval of the final plaza design.
I know that the first two components were covered, and I believe the last one was as well, of the Landmarks Commission, conditioned upon?
Yes.
So you're satisfied that whatever language is needed is...
And elaborated more clearly upon each of those components.
I'm happy to read this again, if you would like.
Well, if that's okay. I do represent downtown, and I'll give some ex parte. I really only had one comment, and that was someone who was concerned about it. And I know that the Landmarks Commission really struggled with it as well, because there were buildings involved. I know that the plaza is bigger than we expected at first, and so that's what's moving into the buildings. At the same time, the design people and the downtown folks have worked really hard on this. We've had it presented to us, and Zach explained the accommodations made. Right in terms of functionality, which is something we need to consider in terms of an overturn, really with the newer buildings at 7th and Kansas right now, and then the parking lot, and then those older buildings, which haven't had much in them, it's kind of a wasteland in terms of walking and the vitality for downtown right now. So I don't think that we're losing anything with the switch. And therefore, I will support the motion.
Councilmember, do you have any ex parte communication you would like to share?
Yes, I've had from the proponents and opponents, emails and phone calls.
Councilwoman Emerson?
Mayor, I received an email, I believe, today regarding this, and I think maybe everybody got the same email. However, in spite of that, I'm still able to render a decision, an impartial decision.
Councilwoman Barea?
I have nothing additional, but I will speak in support of the resolution, or the motion, because I do think that it's taking that next step. We've, like the deputy mayor has said, we've had this come before us as a, as a community and as a body before, and for one reason or other, haven't taken that final step to bring that one piece that I think will serve the entire community as a, as a collection point. And so I will speak in behalf of that and support the motion.
Deputy Mayor?
I've had communication with various folks, both for and against. I appreciate their comments. I took them into consideration, but I am able to make an independent decision outside of that.
Councilwoman Mays?
I've also received some emails, but I don't think it'll change my opinion.
Councilwoman Cohen?
I received the same email, and it won't change my opinion either.
Councilman Lesser?
Yeah, I've received emails, emails and phone calls in regards to this, but I believe that on both, both sides, I believe I can make an impartial decision.
And I too have received emails, I've had conversations, both in favor and against, and I am able to make an impartial decision. That being said, we have a motion and we have a second. We have made our disclosures. We now proceed with the voting.
We have eight yes, Councilmember Ortiz voting no.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed with item F, a resolution with regards to Amtrak.
F is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz, asking that the city's congressional delegation intercede on the city's behalf by requesting Amtrak to provide full passenger service at its Topeka facility.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought this was very important to bring forward. I think we've heard plenty of testimony, and we've all received several emails. I think Ron Dean has left. He kind of sold himself short. He's done a lot of work down there, painted, fixed the chairs. We have a lot of volunteers, because Amtrak won't hire but one person, and Mr. Woods can't do it all, but bless his heart, he does try. And I just think this is very, very important. I hope that we'll support this, and we'll get this over to the delegates as soon as possible. And I don't have, I don't see Mr. Woods signed up to speak. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I'd like to have him come forward to ask him some questions, if he would.
Because of the corporate policy...
Oh, you're right, okay. Okay, and I understand. Just, I just, I just know he could eloquently present it better than me. I think we've all received the emails. I've tried to forward them on. He's done $5,000 in sales this week, is that correct? And that says a lot. And I think there was an email, and I don't know if I passed that one along, that talked about somebody that went down there, and their ticket was messed up, and he got that situated and got them on the move. These are little things that you can't, you can't do. I think we heard testimony from someone that said he woke somebody up. He's always waking me up or calling me, you know, to see where I'm at, if he knows I'm on that train. That's just who Jim Woods is. He's just that friendly, friendly guy. I do want to say, there was an email, several emails, that said that the paper was wrong on the time, and that, that it was, that was late, and they had said, I think it was 86% that said that they're on time. But we can't control the time. I've been on the train where it's had to slow way down. I've been on the train where we ran into somebody and we've had this shutdown, you know. I've been coming back from LA and going through Mexico, and the snow's been on there. Just, we, there's, these are things that we can't control, but I hope everybody will support it. And I was glad to see the ridership track, because, you know, the first time that they said we didn't want a person in there was because the ridership was down. So we have done things to try to bring people aware. Like I said, with the Train Day in May, National Train Day, we've done that. And our ridership has built, and to make people aware, and I hope we will get with Visit Topeka, to let them know that Amtrak is running, we do have a station. And that's when, you know, we're doing these events, people are like, do we have a station down there? Is it still open? You know, so we, we need to do a better, a better job at that. But I think the numbers can speak for theirself. I've rode the train all the way to LA, I've rode the train all the way back to Chicago. I have family in LA and in Chicago, and it's fun both ways, it really, really is. My concern is a lot of the retirees that jump on the train at the last minute, that can't put their luggage on or whatever, and Mr. Woods has done that. A train has always been a part of Topeka. I think we've heard that, and it's always been a part of my family, our generations to come. People came here, Mexican people, came here to, to work on the train, to work for Amtrak, and it's, it's, it's just a part of our inheritance, and I just really hate to see that go. I do fight a lot for it, but I know it's in Karen's district. Not to take anything away from Karen, I don't know if she's a train rider, I know she's a bike rider, but, but anyway, I would hope you guys would support it. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
We have a motion made by Councilwoman Ortiz, we have a second made by Councilwoman Hiller. I would just say a few remarks. I think that it's, before we go into public comment, but I think it's amazing, Mr. Woods, that you have moved the heart of a whole community. We appreciate you exemplify what, what Topecas are, kind-hearted, hard-working individuals who don't take the job opportunity for just to be a job, but you take care of it as it is your own. So for that, I say thank you, on behalf of our whole community, and on behalf of us just sitting over here. The city manager and I had worked, was it last week, on a letter that we both signed, and it was sent over to the headquarters. And I also just request that, for those of you that are watching, I know that our congressional delegation, our state delegation, and other people, and hopefully Amtrak is watching right now, because they know that this is happening, we are making a plea for you to consider leaving this position open, because we certainly value everything that they have to offer, and what Mr. Woods is doing for our community. So we humbly request your support, and, and we thank you for your service to our city.
I third the motion.
Okay.
I've used up all my comment time tonight.
Okay. Yes, you have. Councilwoman Hiller?
I am so pleased to hear that, that the city manager and mayor have already sent a letter, and that we have our state and federal delegation working on this. I fully support the letter from us about the position, but this, this situation that we're at is a, is a crisis point, and so I think we do need to use it as the proverbial wake-up call, and, and make a commitment as a city that we want to retain train service, that meaning the Southwest Chief, which is what we have right now. But just a quick recap, people have been working on getting train service to Texas through here for some time. Someone earlier mentioned the Lone Star, which is Texas service, and the Heartland Flyer has, is been the, to go down through Newton and then drop down through Oklahoma City, to and through Oklahoma, has also been something people have been working on for a long time. I'm not quite sure at this point how much got sent to everybody. I got most of it, because I've been a train rider since I was born, and also, and from here in the Midwest, and have been an advocate before. The original, there are some things that I think we need to officially worry about. And it is a cross-country train. They're not always going to be cracks and mac on time, but it's really valuable for us, and a commitment was made nationally that there would be a full transcontinental train service. What are you going to do without it? One of the things we've learned in the course of some of this correspondence is that Amtrak was looking for at least 12, 14,000 boardings to justify having a full-time person. People are buying online, that's just fine. We've heard about the service. But the other issue is that, what staff has advised us is that if, that what happens is whether people are online or going through the ticket office, the train reports as sold out, and Amtrak's not adding a car. You know, you're not going to be able to sell tickets if there aren't seats. And the staff is wonderful. For those who haven't ridden Amtrak, in my opinion, 1:00 AM and 5:00 AM are great times. You're either getting home late, or you're staying up late and then sleeping all the way to where you're going, and, and you get the daytime to ride through Illinois or through New Mexico, and it's wonderful. So we've got train service, we've got the service that we have now to protect. And one of the problems we have with that is that, is that it, when you get into the Raton area, and I've gone with Boy Scouts to go to Philmont on that train, scouts from all over the country take that train to get to Philmont, but the, at this point, on the BNSF tracks that are going out that way, there isn't, there's no longer freight traffic on it. So they're having to maintain it all, and that's been part of the push-pull, apparently. We need to be advocating that they should. If that's a link in that cross-country network that they need to fully fund, then, then they need to do it. We're going to need to keep on it and weigh in on that. So we need to make sure we're supporting the funding of the whole system, but in particular, the Southwest Chief, stay on it in terms of the expansions that folks are doing, and also do, advocate with them about adding cars. Our boardings can't go up if people can't get a ticket. And also look at how, at how maybe we're working on downtown parking, we're working on downtown revitalization, and transportation within the downtown arena. So maybe all of us need to put a little more thought into how to get people back and forth from the train station. Are there some ways that we could do a better job of promoting train travel and making people aware of how easy it is? I mean, there are model will go pick people up, but they don't know that intuitively. And so just working a little harder to put that package together and promote it, hopefully with still a full-time attendant, because it does make a difference, as people have said. So just wanted to broaden that agenda, and thank you again for already pitching in.
We do have two individuals signed up for public comment. The first person signed up is Susan Wright. The next person signed up then is Pierre Subtin. The next person signed up then is Pierre Subtin. Pierre?
Hi, Mayor and Councilman. It's good to, good to be here and good to see everybody here. I've to have ridden the train. Obviously, why would I be here? And I know Jim Woods. There was a train delay. I was with my grandson in California last year. He was going to Truckee, California. The second stop we was at in Richmond, the train was stuck for an hour and a half. It was the second stop on the damn train. We had a problem with a, with a passenger. I don't know what the problem was, but they cleared us out of the car, turned off the AC, and we're all waiting around. There's police with their, their gear on, riot gear, and we're going like, whoa. So here it is, the second stop. I hadn't reached Chicago and already it was an hour and a half late. Anyway, I'm going to go through my spiel here. Thank you. Anyway, Topeka, of course, is the capital of Kansas. We deserve the best. Railroads put Topeka on the map. The Santa Fe, Fred Harvey started his famous services here in Topeka. Why we don't have something to put that in the track somewhere, I don't know. The Amtrak agent, he's a reference on a train travel. If you've got a travel problem, he'll tell you which seat is the best to take, the best prices. You want to change your seating itinerary, directly we resolve it instead of going through red tape. When I looked at a store in St. Louis, people would come in, ask questions, and later in their individual timeframe, make a purchase. The sale going, of course, to the person who made the transaction. The total picture was a sale with team players involved resorting in that sale. Going further with our Amtrak agent, there are known statistics that show when a person contacts local agent for information, then with that input, later make an online ticket sale. The face of Amtrak, he's in person. He's helpful. He checks for best buys, refunds as necessary. Reassures a first-time traveler, which is usually an everyday occurrence unless it's an animal walking in or something. He always has a smile. He greets you at the door. He locates last bags and has them sent back to Topeka. He helps the stranded passengers. He calls people a day ahead when the trains are running late, stocks travel brochures, rebooks tickets for those who get their travel dates in the wrong. Done that. Calls the EMS, police. When an issue onboard the train affects onboard or onboarding passengers, it alerts at a conductor of potential issues such as a passenger being intoxicated. He creates a safer environment for all concerned. He calls a rescue mission when a passenger has no place to go. He assists the elderly, the blind, and physically challenged. He explains how to read a timetable, which is a scary thing if you've never done it before. Onboard train rules and rules when riding the train. No invisible telephone operator can do these jobs. This leaves a faceless problem prone to less personal experiences for travelers. The above are real problems solved right at the stations that are going through impersonable and frustrating experience through an online or an operator that has little experience or caring on a customer's concern. Lastly, with everything else mentioned, the local Topeka Amtrak agent is an ambassador for our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, Boddy. Councilwoman Padilla.
I'd just like to add a couple comments. Like everybody else in here, it seems like somebody's taking the time to ride the train. My father worked for Santa Fe, and ever since I can remember as a young child, every summer we would take at least a couple vacations to either Chicago, Texas, California, New Mexico, and those are really fond memories. And the thing that I think maybe I haven't heard mentioned, but I think in some way we all know it, is that the presence of the railroad in Topeka is fundamental to this city. I mean, it's why we are here. It's why a lot of families migrated here to work and raise families. I think it is as important, and some people may disagree, as Brown v. Board. I mean, this is part of Topeka just as much as that school decision. And to let it dissipate quietly would be a disservice to everyone who has worked for that company, who has worked for the railroad and has kept the railroad here. They're here for a reason. They're one of the largest repair hubs in the entire country. So we're important. We should be important enough to maintain an employee to give us firsthand personal service as part of the train service that we have here in Topeka. I support the resolution, and I hope not just our congressional members, but our current governor should be as, as vocal in asking for consideration to keep this train station open.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I just want to add something, and I appreciate that. Councilwoman Padilla, when we were looking to get Mars, we got Mars by our train service because Lawrence was going to get Mars. And that's kind of scary, but Mars, a lot of people don't know that, but Mars, they ship all of their stuff through the train tracks, all of their goods. And so because we had that and Lawrence didn't, that's how we got Mars to come here and say, "Okay, we will." Of course, we had to do a whole bunch of work on the platform, but Lawrence didn't have a train track. I mean, it goes, it goes through Lawrence, but not where they needed it to go. So it's just very valuable, and I don't think we really look at how valuable it is. And I think we just, you know, I hear it in the morning, I lay in bed and I hear it, and we just take it for granted, but we're, you know, we're really blessed to have it. So I hope we all open our big mouths and, and push, push for it. We just got a few more days. Keep your fingers crossed, Jim.
All right. Seeing no additional individuals wanting to speak, we now proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution is unanimous. I hope that, again, this sends a huge message out to our friends that are watching. We now proceed with announcement. If the clerk would read the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'll read the tentative agenda. Since we have no meeting for the next two weeks, our tentative agenda for the June 1st and 1st, or June 5th meeting includes utilities first quarter report, public works first quarter report, discussion on the sales tax extension, discussion on housing trust fund ordinance amendments. Action items include special assessments ordinances, zoo project amendment to Case Garden, ECD social service grant recommendations, TGT funding recommendations, and disposal of property at 418 Southwest Tyler. Those are the tentative agenda items at this point.
Thank you very much. Now we proceed with announcements. City manager, you again.
Yes, I'll have one announcement tonight, and that primarily is that we do have a battle of badges, which relates to a blood drive that we do each year, or we did it last year, and you're, come to Holiday Building and donate blood, and then you can vote for the police department or the fire department to determine who the winner will be as to the most donated blood for their cause.
You're saying that, and I see Chief Duke razzing the chief of police.
You know, I'll be back there in this.
Yeah, I wish that the cameras would have been pointed over there because he immediately just lunged into the chief. Ooh. Well, I have a few announcements, and I'm, I'm excited to say, very proud to say, "Go Bods." Wow. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Thursday, we had Washburn Tech graduations, two graduations in Washburn Tech. I think that we had 600 students for Washburn Tech, shook every single hand. And then on Friday, for those of you that don't know this, Washburn University has an award called the Siberson Award. Two individuals left a significant amount of money, and they select from each of the schools who the best students are, and they're nominated by their professors. They have to be a 4.0 GPA, and they have to be very active in the community. And the individuals that were selected were spectacular. You could just hear all of their involvement in the community. It was just exciting. In addition to that, we also had our doctorates. Our honorary doctorates were recognized. We have four individuals. And then we also had the Golden Regalia, which is the individuals that were celebrating 50, 60, and 70 years of their graduation at Washburn. It was phenomenal. And of course, we had all of the other graduations. It was a wonderful, wonderful, very long weekend. So Sunday, your mayor actually went ahead and just put her feet up because it was, it was long. So after having, yeah, it was, it was, it was tough. I have to train like Dr. Masachek and Dr. Farley. So I will say publicly, I'm going to give Carlton Scroggins a hard time. Those of you that were today celebrating Bike Month and did biking with the mayor, I don't know who could keep up with Carlton Scroggins. And I told them that I would make note, jokingly, of course, I'm saying it's jokingly, but that I will make note to the city manager to make sure that the last hill that he made me go through was counted in his evaluation against them. It was a phenomenal event. We, we had a great time, very well attended. And the last thing that I'll say is today, we celebrated, on top of that, the Small Business Awards. It was a great event. We had several organizations recognized. LessHelp was one of them, TK Magazine for being a great advocate, and of course, one of the other individuals that was celebrated was Shendel. If you want to have, Councilwoman Hiller and I had a conversation, and she wanted to, to know how I share everything that I do, make sure that you go to Michelle for Topeka on Facebook, and you could there log in and get podcasts, which I share with some guests to talk about things that are happening in our community. We have a community blog where anybody from the community that we work with goes ahead and puts out an article. You have Facebook. We have a website. We have everything. And every week, I try to put out a really detailed report with pictures. Some of the council members have made the comments and said, "How do you do that?" But it's, it's all out there for all of you to know. And we will go with Councilwoman Lesser. Councilwoman Hiller.
Well, I'll keep it quick, but I painted on the wall on Saturday, the new Brown v. Board mural that's on the wall of the Hills Company right across the street from Monroe School. There were hundreds of people there. It was hot, too, by the way, but it, it, it's exciting to see it emerge. Annette Billings was there and read her poem again that we all just love, and that poem is now emerging in words on the bottom of that wall. And it's very, very special then, recognizing people and events, but also words that are very contemporary. I've just spent the last two days with the folks from Georgia State regarding the UNESCO nomination for Monroe. They have had a wonderful visit. There were various stakeholders that participated in that. This is a long process. There was a lot of technical work done in terms of what needs to happen and, and what we need to do. And I will say that overall, we need to create context for that, for the Brown v. Board case and heritage tourism. We've wanted to do that anyway, to grow our tourism and to grow our economy. That will also help. We really are the keystone to that global nomination with, with the story of Brown v. Board. We need to make sure we're helping to lead that because we could be critical to getting Speaking of that, everyone's invited to come on Saturday. The Brown v. Board Sumner Legacy Group is doing bus tours from 1:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon commemorating the 64th anniversary of Brown v. Board case. So there'll be free bus tours from Monroe to Sumner and back with a total of 10 sites that, there will be a narrator on the bus, and there will be someone who is a Monroe or Sumner grad who will be at Sumner to talk about their experience. There will also be special exhibits at Monroe that day, and we'll be taking names for people who attended Monroe or Sumner or any of the schools of the day that want to be included in advocating for moving that agenda forward. Saturday is also graduation day for high schools, and so a shout-out to all the grads wherever those graduations happen throughout the day, and also wish everybody is safe and fun Memorial Day.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I would like Molly and the judge to sign, to stand up, and who else is out there? I don't see Sasha. These, these women, Molly, joined me last Wednesday for the 2018 Empowerment of Women at the Habitat House, and they were painting and hammering, and we had quite a few from the city, and I just wanted to say thank you for going outside of the rim of scope, especially the judge. I was like, "Look at her, she's got a little hat." And she's like, I mean, Molly, I expect to be there, but you know. But they, they did not treat me like a councilwoman. They treated me like a worker, but I just wanted to publicly say thank you to both of you guys for taking the day and, and working on Habitat Houses. We, we put in a lot of hours, so thank you again. I just think that's great. We took a picture, and I meant to, I meant to put it up on the TV, but I'll get that. School will be out on May 25th, that Friday, so start watching for all the kids this summer and also all the grand, or the kids that will be graduating from grade school and moving on. Also, the bus will have again this year, that kids 18 and under get to ride free all summer long, which is a big plus, so we can get them to their jobs, malls, or the library, wherever they need to go. Last but not least, in the summer months, they're great months and they're, and they're really, really hot, but I just want to encourage you to go ahead and sign up for those smoke detectors because nothing can be hotter at your house than a fire. So we want to make sure that, yeah, I, I think I got this side square. It's, it's that side and, and right here. Well, we've got, boy, they're scared. Look at them. Their thumbs up and, "Mr. Lassiter, don't put your head down." He's looking away, so. I will get an update and come back to you in June. I know, Mr. Henderson, they said they did a lot of work at your house.
Yes, ma'am.
How many detectors did you need?
Two.
Two? Besides what you had?
Correct.
So see, and that's, that's the point that I'm trying to put out there because you guys think that you have enough, but you don't. Mr. Padilla said he had his two, right? Okay, so, and the mayor's talking because she doesn't, she hasn't gotten signed up because she, she's trying to say Sunday's the only day, but I'm trying to tell her we can get out there on Sunday, right, chief?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, all right. So, so let's touch base with her because fires do happen on Sunday, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So anyway, thank you and enjoy the rest of the month off, guys.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. As Councilwoman Hiller said, we have graduations Saturday for the USP 501 schools, and then Sunday, Sunday we have Shawnee Heights in my district graduating. So I want to congratulate all the graduates there, and please be safe. When you're looking back in 30 years, you will, you'll not remember what you did, but you will remember if you did something stupid and hurt yourself. So be smart when you're being dumb. I, I would, though. Sorry, I'm not going to be able to.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. I want to say that to, today I spent a real good time out at French Middle School, and some of my fellow council members were out there today. I want to thank them for their invitation. They sent us these little cards last week, and it's really encouraging to see those kids out there using everything they can to come up with ideas. And the thing that we noted out there today was that mostly ideas, at least that I got to visit with the youth about, were not like business ideas so that they could have a business of their own and become businessmen and profitable. Everything that I listened to was for the service of others, and it was for the service of others in this community. And, and each one that I talked to, when I asked them, "How did you come to this idea?" They gave me a personal experience that they had had, either through homelessness, not being able to access health care, and abandonment. All those kinds of personal things that happened in their lives were the basis for how they thought they could improve this community by bringing those services to others. And so I was really impressed, and if you get the chance to spend any time with the youth when they're in that mode of thinking, it's really encouraging and gets you, gets you really thinking about how things can be better if we include their voices at the table that brings the ideas to the public and to, to this body. So I, I thank them for that invitation. And I want to just follow up on what Councilwoman Lesser said earlier today. It is National Law Enforcement Memorial Day, and I want to thank all my fellow officers across the country and here locally, for those who continue to serve. It was a profession that I was very proud to be a part of, and I will never leave it. And so again, I thank you for, I thank them for their service, and I wish them well and safety. Thank you.
Yippee de maire.
Back in 2009, I'm kidding. I- I, too, had the opportunity to go to French this afternoon and was blown away. I thought it was very well done, and I, too, appreciate the invitation. Briefly, I want to publicly congratulate my niece, Aleah. She is graduating from Topeka High. It's an amazing experience, and I thank them for inviting me into their family. I married her aunt, Amber, and that's, she's been a joy to have around. So, Aleah, congratulations. Can't wait to see you in college. It's going to be fantastic. Saturday, downtown, 10,000 people. Wow. That was awesome. I mean, it was wall-to-wall people. There were 20 food trucks down there. It was an incredible sight to see. There's going to be two more concerts coming up this summer, a rock concert and a jazz concert. I can't wait to see them blow away the country concert. But it was just wild to see that many people in downtown having fun. The businesses were open, they were making money, just great. I encourage all of you to come down. Next Tuesday, you just thought you've got it off, we are hosting a town hall discussion for the sales tax opportunities and what people want out of their infrastructure. What quality roads do folks want in this town? You know, let's talk about, let's have a frank conversation about where we're at, where people want to go, and then it takes money to get there. How do we come up with that? How do we raise it? That sort of thing. The mayor and I have been working for a couple weeks to put this on. So, next Tuesday, doors open at 5:00. We'll begin the meeting at 5:30. It'll be at the Law Enforcement Center in Classroom A. We're going to televise it. It'll be streamed on the website if you can't come. If folks out there have questions or comments, you're welcome to email them to me in advance. If you can't make it, we'll try to provide answers. But really, just want to sit down and have a frank conversation with the community and sort out what do we want, and then let's talk about how we afford that. It's not easy. I would love to hear ideas on what folks think on how to do that, but in order to get started, we need to have a discussion, so. I also would like to publicly wish Councilwoman Schwartz a happy birthday. You know, she and I share a birthday at the end of May, which the city manager graciously agrees to give us off every year. So, thank you for that. But happy birthday, Councilwoman Schwartz. I miss having you by my side with your counsel. Not that you're not excellent, but a soft spot in my heart for someone who shares my birthday. And last but not least, it's getting hot outside, and don't forget about your pets. Shade, water, you know, they don't have the ability to get in air conditioning like we do, and they're also covered with hair and fur. Well, some people are covered with that, too. Never mind. But anyway, please don't forget about your pets. Everybody have a wonderful holiday, and we'll see you in June.
Councilwoman Mays.
I've got a few things tonight. I also attended the French Middle School Save Our City. It was a lot of fun. It's exciting to see what, you know, middle school kids can come up with. I think they were all eighth graders. I said last week, sixth, seventh, and eighth, I think they were all eighth, but, and that sort of leads me to my next thing. There's a meeting at French Middle School on Tuesday night from 6:00 to 7:30. It's a public meeting. It's informational, put on by Public Works Department, having to do with the road construction at 29th and Fair Lawn in regards to the wheat fields development. So, people that would be affected by that in their daily commute probably ought to go by there and find out what's going on. And again, that's 6:00 to 7:30 on Tuesday, May 29th, and then, so it's not this Tuesday. But then also, there is another informational presentation, an open house for a road construction project in my district. That is for the streets in Clarion Woods that are having a mill and overlay this summer, I believe, and that is going to be from 4:30 to 6:00 on Wednesday, May 30th. That's at Prince of Peace Lutheran Church at 37th and Wannamaker. And the last thing I wanted to mention, we've talked about the Brown v. Board mural at Monroe, but there's another Brown v. Board mural that has not been mentioned tonight, and that is at the Capitol on the third floor of the Capitol on the south side. A brand-new Brown v. Board mural is going up. It's 22 feet wide, eight feet tall. It's been in the works for years, and it's been privately funded, $135,000 they raised to get this done. It's going to be there forever. And the unveiling, although it's pretty public what it's going to look like, the big announcement and the unveiling of it will be Thursday at noon. It's on the third floor, right outside the old Supreme Court chambers.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to talk as long as everybody else. Ditto, ditto, ditto about French Middle School. I told the kid that wants to bring an NBA team to Topeka that he needs some work. He still needs to work on that a little bit more. June 5th, Topeka Gives is going to be at Fair Lawn Plaza, and all of your favorite charities and nonprofits are going to be there. So, I expect you guys to come on over to the west side. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was going to ask Councilwoman Mays before we close, but yes, please, go ahead.
All right, now, I'll try this again here. I want to congratulate my daughter Reagan. Yes, she's graduating. Thank you. This will be, you'll start asking me questions, and I can answer. So, Reagan was born deaf in 2000, and it's been a tough, a long road. But I want to thank Dr. Manford Barber and Dr. Gary McKnight here in town. And Reagan got a cochlear implant at nine months of age. She was the youngest recipient in the United States at that time, and it's a good news story. She's done fantastic. She cheers. She plays on the soccer team. She runs track. So, it's a fantastic thing, but I'm proud of her. Congratulations.
Oh, that's beautiful. Councilwoman Mays, if you want to be in well-regarded with the rest of the body, you should bring treats like Councilwoman Schwartz used to do.
Councilwoman Ortiz. I told him at the first meeting, he didn't listen. I apologize, I won't be able to be there Tuesday night. Grandson number one will be graduating from fifth grade, so I think that's pretty important. And congratulate, now, I will congratulate that, even though I'm T-high, I will congratulate.
At this point, we do have three executive sessions tonight. Two executive sessions. If the city attorney could read the parameters.
Motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 15 minutes to discuss matters related to employer-employee negotiations as justified by KSA 75-4319B3. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Financial Administrative Services Director Nikki Lee, Public Works Director Jason Peake, Human Resources Director Jackie Russell, Assistant Budget Manager Ted Clements, and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes.
We have heard the criteria. Is there a motion? We have a motion by Deputy Mayor. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Emerson. We proceed with the voting. We can do, we could do a, Jen, we could do a voice. We'll go ahead and raise your right hand if you approve. All having the motion passed unanimously, we will have a five-minute recess. It is 8:18, and we will convene back and allow for the chambers to be vacant.
All right.
We have exited the executive session. There has been no action taken. We do need to resume into the same executive session to add no more than 10 minutes into that session. Do we have a motion? We have a motion made by Councilwoman Padilla, seconded by Councilwoman Ortiz. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We will now recess into executive session once more with the same parameters. We have concluded the first executive session without any action being taken. We need to recess into a second executive session. If the city attorney could read the parameters.
The motion would be to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 20 minutes to discuss personnel matters related to non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy of those discussed as justified by KSA 75-4319B1. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, and Human Resources Director Jackie Russell. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes.
Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor, some motion. Councilwoman Emerson, seconds. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We have all hands risen. The motion is unanimous. We will recess into executive session not to exceed 20 minutes. We have completed the executive session. No action has been taken. At this point, the meeting is adjourned.